They'll look at you weird.
Okay. So, a call to meeting, a call, meeting to order reconvening after onsite visit. This is the October 1st, 2019 Regular Meeting of the Minnesota Planning and Zoning, Planning Commission and Board of Adjustment. We will do a second roll call.
Don Jacobson.
Ann Loughman.
Josh Young.
Bob Fear.
Laura Allen.
Maggie Wentler.
Brittany Connor.
Okay, thank you. So, the agenda's on the screen. Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Madam Chair, just a notice that item number 3B and 7B were deleted from the agenda because of the applicant wanted it withdrawn. But for discussion, I would like to keep 7B open, at least just for discussion amongst ourselves if we could.
Okay. So, we will add that to new business? Anything else?
I guess I'm under old business. I just want to talk, I do it after many too, but just on the Grandview Lodge impervious coverage density, I gave Brittany. If I just want to see if she's got any questions or, you know, what her and I have talked about.
Okay.
Yep.
Very good. Thank you.
What are we adding on to new business? I missed something.
The 7B.
Oh, 7B, okay. I just, I heard new business, then I questioned, okay. Okay. Thank you.
No problem. Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. So, now we'll go on to the approval of the September 3rd, 2019 Regular Meeting minutes. Are there any corrections or additions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Move shift number 3, 2019 as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Approval of the September 10th, 2019 Special Meeting Minutes. Are there any corrections or additions? So, I believe on line 150, under the conditions, it says in here it is recommended that water meters be installed. I think we changed that to water meters will be installed. Not that we're recommending that they be installed, that they will be installed.
Go over the call, I'm sorry. I can certainly change it. He said that he was going to do the noise, so I agree with that one. So, you want it to say must be installed?
Yes.
Or just delete the first four words, water meters to be installed on building associated with the conditional use permit.
That works. So, that was your motion. Anything else? Everything else looks good?
Oh, yeah. Okay. I'll move with that change.
Oh, no, I mean, did you look? Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any, did anybody else have any corrections or additions? Okay. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes with that one correction.
So moved.
Second.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Can I ask a question even though I wasn't at the meeting?
Oh, yes. Yes. Oh.
No. And just for, you know, if it was Tom Wolers' desire to have water, he had that discussion with me several times.
Yeah. It was just a concern of staff, regular at this point in time.
Okay.
I.
Okay. So, then shall we move on to, what can we move on to?
Let's not Monica Andersons, I know her a little bit, we'll meet her.
Okay.
But if we would like to talk about the communication tower, that was John, you certainly know that?
Yes.
About two years ago, the Planning Commission at that time had an application before us to install a cellphone antenna on top of one of the lights out here in back of the pickle. We removed the lights off the top, installed an antenna, put the lights back on. It was all done, taken care of. There were conditions and everything on it, and it was passed and approved. The company never did come in to complete the project, though. They never started. There was some question about who owned the property. There was a narrow strip of property along the back fence of the ball fields over here, and that had to get straightened out, and I think it just kind of got lost. So, after about a year and a half, after a year, the permit lapsed, and nothing was done. About two months ago, at a city council meeting, some citizens who live over in that part of the city, down the hill, over by Birch Avenue and stuff like that, came in complaining that they couldn't get any cellphone signals over that area. It was very spotty, hard to get, and they wanted to know what the city council could do. At that time, the council directed staff to write the cellphone company and attached a number of names of people who live over there who wanted cellphone service, and asked the cellphone company if they would come back and put the cell tower back up and go through with the process that they discarded the year before. As I understand, Courtney sent the letter out, right? And they responded, yeah, that they'd like to come back and put the tower in, but for some reason, and I don't know, if some staff members here said, no, this isn't the best, is not the best stop, best spot for the antenna to go, which was already approved for this spot. They wanted to move it over by the fire department. And when the cellphone company heard that, they said, nah, we're not going to do that. Costs too much money to do that, so they pulled, pulled out. And I'm just wondering now, because of the interest of the citizens up in this area and the interest of the council to take a look at it again, if we shouldn't be going back to the cellphone company and say, we're not sure who said you had to move it to the fire department, but come on back in and let's see what we can do.
I can shed some light on this. So, they had originally been approved to put it right here.
Yep.
Well, the problem is, is that's right at the end of the parking lot for the pickle, and it's where we store snow in the winter, mass amounts of snow. And I don't know that Public Works was ever brought into the conversation previously, but when Tom, Jenny, and I went out there, we started looking at it, and we said, you know, this just isn't a great spot for anyone, because they're not going to be able to access it quite a bit of the time, and then we have the financial burden of moving all the snow off-site, and then where are we going to put it? So, we walked around the baseball diamond just to figure out, you know, maybe instead of putting it on that, the left side, we put it on the right side, and we found out that moving it to the fire hall worked better for everyone, because they can access it 24/7, no problems, no parking in front of it, we don't have to worry about snow removal. So, I emailed them saying, hey, this, I think, would work better for everyone. Would you guys be willing to entertain a conversation? And they basically said no, that it's where they, where they wanted to put it, or they weren't doing it. And then they wanted us to give them free lease for however long in lieu of that, and we said, we're not interested in doing that, because, you know, why should the city take on a financial burden? And they, their argument was, well, why should we take on a financial burden? And then we were at a stalemate, and here we are.
They wanted the city to pay what?
They wanted the city to give them free rent in order to move it. And so, we.
Well, there was no rent charge in the original permit, was there?
There's no what?
There was no rent or anything in the original permit?
Yes.
I don't remember that.
Yep. They have to pay us rent to have it on our property.
The city has recently just renegotiated the rent that's paid out by the wastewater payment facility, and that now the city has actually an escalation charge in it, because the first, I'll say, 20-year agreement was just a flat rate for 20 years. So, just a history, I mean, so that, when it started to get kind of lower for 20 years, so the city's successful now, and I can't tell you what the number is, but it's, I don't know, five, 600 bucks a month there's.
Yeah, we get, well, it's 750 plus 350, so about 1,000 bucks a month.
And we had, there has been talks amongst staff about trying to get a third-party tower put in that location, one of those locations there, where it wouldn't be Verizon, Sprint, T-Mobile, whatever. It would be an antenna that basically services whoever rents from that antenna.
Brittany, help me understand, they're flat? No, that's the conclusion. I said, they're objecting to the fixed cost because they, they got a, there's more, more cost associated with initial installation, or is there performance problems? I mean.
They don't want to pay to have a survey done, and new legal descriptions, and new contracts, and all that drawn up, is what I ascertained from the conversation.
And any idea what the gross magnitude of that would be? Are we talking about a couple thousand bucks?
According to them, it was thousands and thousands. I don't remember if he said tens of thousands or hundreds of thousands, but that was the response I got, was for sure he said it would be at least 10,000, which.
And I'd say, WSN, we surveyed hundreds of cellphone towers, you, all over the Midwest. So, I, but, okay, so you said it has to be surveyed, you have to subject a survey drawn up, you got to record it. So, I'll say, yes, they would probably incur a $3,000 to $4,000 cost, have not, they may work for the survey out of Southern Illinois.
Right.
Right. And I mean, I know, but you, we, Chad Survey and Brian Delcum, we work, we survey hundreds of towers in the Midwest, and you know, it's, I find it interesting why they have to keep resurping some of the things, but, but, so that's the ballpark you're talking about. It's definitely not, you know, close to approaching 10,000 dollars. But, yes, it's, it is $3,000, $4,000 on the low end.
Yep.
Well, my concern was that they came before the council, a number of citizens who live up there who don't have cellphone coverage right now, and it could be a real issue for them, and they were very happy to hear that we were going to send the letter out to the cell tower company. I think that we should investigate this a little bit more, instead of just saying that's the end of it, and.
They don't want to work with us, though. We even tried just doing a telephone conference, and they didn't want any part in it. So, I don't know which more.
Why don't you find out the name of the guy who runs the company, and we'll, we'll write a letter? I mean, I think it's a public safety thing, to some degree, too.
Right. Somebody had first alert or something like that, and their signal doesn't get out?
Yeah.
A senior?
Yeah.
I agree with you totally, Don.
When they first came in, you know, they were looking out at the cemetery, and I mean, that was their primary, where they came in, and then it kind of came around, so that, you know, the Pickleary was offered, and then, you know, because I think, you know, the city and both the company agreed that, you know, the Pickleary was a better alternative than at the cemetery.
And a lot of it was due to the sharing use of their generators. So, if power went out, the pickle at City Hall could tap into their generator. That was, I think, one of the bigger reasons.
Yeah, but they, they wanted to put in a diesel generator, and we talked them into a much cheaper gas, natural gas generator, smaller one, and it wasn't a cost-sharing thing at all. I'm just, my only point is that I think we have, to some degree, a public safety issue, that if we could address that and talk with them and solve the problem, instead of just letting it go.
I agree, Paulie.
Well, we are trying to get that third-party cell tower as well. So, I mean, we're not giving up altogether, but for us to move forward with Verizon, council would have to basically say, we don't care, we, we want it, and then we would have, take on that financial deficit.
And this tower isn't going to solve everybody's problems?
No.
For those people who came in here, because if they don't have Verizon, it's not going to do them any good.
And topologically, we really don't even have a guarantee that it would do anything.
Well, you'd have to have a map showing the surface area.
Yeah.
And still, if they're in a hole or a dip, it still doesn't help that.
Well, you can always go out for bids.
You know, that location, did I hear you right, saying that they wanted no rent for life, for infinity?
No.
Or just to tell you.
However many years. They didn't specifically say.
How about, how about as an alternative, I'm just throwing this out for brainstorming, until they recoup their costs during their, doing their $3,000 to $4,000 survey?
Right.
But for 10 years?
Yeah.
It's kind of like the tail wagging the dog here.
Right.
So, I think we should talk to them again, or.
Like your deal raising the bar.
Whatever.
Well, but, right, if you would offer like a five-year period of no, no, and then, because that's going to be.
That would cover it.
Probably cover, acting.
What do you expect the rent would be if it was 1,000 at the other site? 500 a month?
Well, at least.
Yeah.
Well, okay, well, then there are, why, it's less than a year.
Yeah.
No, 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 it's not 1,000.
350 plus maybe 750 per quarter, so it's probably around 500.
Yeah, I, yeah, so I don't expect that much per month.
Yeah. If they're worried about the cost, we could probably convince somebody to handle that some way.
Well, I mean, I find it interesting, I mean, just from the city's standpoint, if you take the lead, if you, you, if you want to be really progressive, right, if you build a tower, you know, they will come. You know, if you take the initiative to build and offer a incentive to, you know, hey, first one up, we'll offer you a real deal on your first, you know, five-year, 10-year lease, that might catch somebody else's attention, well, wait a minute, we're now the competition is coming in on us.
Yep.
Interesting.
Don't multiple companies use the same tower?
There's, yes, yep. There's different ways that they do that, but yes.
Okay. Any idea what the height of the tower would be in either location?
70 feet. We were actually going to encourage them to go up to 100 feet, just because then we could hopefully reach those outlying areas that need the service. But pretty much, pretty much every conversation I had with them was very, no, this is the plan, this is what's happening, this is it.
I may be getting ahead of myself, but there's a tower that's twice that tall over in southwest Baxter, northwest Baxter, that when they put it in, they decorate it as an evergreen.
Yep.
And I ride by there with cyclists that don't know that it's a tower, 100 yards away, and.
That was the requirement the last time.
Yeah. I'm saying, I really like that feature on taller towers. You know, kind of fits with our company's plan, green up north like this one.
Very expensive, though.
Well, Madam, Madam Chair, I'd make a motion, or whatever, that the Planning Commission direct staff to contact, was it Bryson?
Do you want me to contact Bryson?
Contact him and tell him, maybe we can work out a better deal, or explore the possibility of other companies coming in at, at a new location, see what kind of response we get.
So, so if this is being handled at the city council level, what's Planning and zoning's role in this?
No, for, what I meant was, if they wanted to grant that lease abatement, or whatever you'd like to call it, that would have to happen on the council level. We wouldn't be able to do that.
We'll see what the interest would be if you dangle that out there.
Right. Well, we do have another cell company that is moderately interested at least, so I mean, it's not, it's not do or die.
I just think we should continue the discussion and not let it go.
Well, it sounds like they're continuing something, right?
Okay.
I mean, but I don't know, I mean, it just.
No, it's not, we're not dead in the water. We're, we're going to figure it out one way or another.
Can we ask for an update on what she's talked about at the next P&amp;Z meeting?
Sure. I'll even ask her at the next city council meeting, put her on the spot.
I won't be at the next one? No.
Andrew, back up. Okay.
Okay. So, are we satisfied with that, Don?
Yeah, let's just keep it on the front burner.
Yep.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Yeah, it's a life safety issue.
So, then shall we go to old business, the Grandview Lodge Impervious Coverage?
All right. Just after, you know, their, August when they came in, they had their, their hand, that's the calculation. So, saw that, I provided Brittany with copies of the large map that was actually revised in December 2018, made, you know, Peter Mann had made several requests, you know, that was updated, so I'm just offering, you know, that was provided to city staff, let's just say, predecessor probably did do the best job in transferring information. So, she now has it, and I don't think you've met with them, so I guess, does, is there any questions? What I told Brittany is, this is just, it's kind of her, she'll just keep score, keep information on this, and then as, as we all know, the big wheel of Grandview churns along here, yes, we're not going to ask them to update that on every little cabin, but maybe then at the end of the year, Brittany will, okay, it's time to update it, Grandview, because I just want to know as a zoning administrator, where you stand in all your tiers and in your impervious calculations.
Yep.
So, just for the commission's, you know, that's what staff and I discussed, and I gave her those maps and that advice, just, you know, keep track of stuff, and then, you know, but don't, let's not let it go three years before it gets out of, I think it's old enough to update. Also, I did do, I was curious, when did you meet with Grandview? Did they probably learn something from looking at their own map, or?
He didn't say a whole lot, to be honest. I did give him a copy as well to keep track of, because we have a standing weekly meeting, so my thought was, if we both keep a copy, then we can cross-reference and hopefully be on the same page.
Yep. Yep, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So, let's see. Shall we go on to permits?
Sure. Does anyone have any questions on the permits, or should I jump to the violations update?
I think I had a question on one.
Yeah. Did you like my new overview sheet that I included?
I did.
Good.
So, let's see, this one, oh, this one on Rosie's Way, that's a commercial waterfront? It's, it's permit 19070?
I'm wondering where it's at?
Yeah.
It's up by Fairway Mines. It's part of the Grandview expansion north of the vault villa.
Okay. So, it's part of Grandview's, okay, because Google didn't know where it was either.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Very good. That's, that was my only question.
Anyone else? Okay. I'll go through the updates of violations quickly here. Birch Avenue, I had given you an update not so long ago, that they were making progress, and we were heading in the right direction. They knew, they have new violations now, where they've installed a deck and a fence and other things that I probably can't see with no permits or anything, so we've brought the attorney back into the loop on that. I did try to reach out to them, no response, but I didn't really expect any different. My understanding is he spends time between here and Arizona, so it might just be that thing, that, you know, missing each other, but I will keep you guys in the loop as that moves forward. And then, my last update is on the Moxey Tree. There's the tree at Lakers Lane and Church there, that's part, it's under the power lines, and it's about, I think it's four feet from the stop sign, eight feet from the curb. We talked to the owner, and we basically decided that, at this point, the city is going to maintain it, and the power company will maintain it as it grows, and that is that.
You're not going to take it out?
No.
You're going to maintain it such that it's not a.
A safety concern.
A safety concern.
Correct. Yep. So, we'll trim it back from the stoplight, or, sorry, stop sign, and then the power company will have to take care of the overhead.
There's a pretty good chance the sodium chloride, you might not do so well when it's on.
Thank you for that.
Somebody gets a little ambitious with the salt spreader. I'm just reading between the lines.
Yep. But that is all I have for violations.
Okay.
I mean, it's just so close, it's going to get it back.
Yeah. Yeah.
What about somebody slipping off the road? In the car?
Little tree will just bend right over.
So, there was no correspondence or site visits?
With the Moxey Tree? Oh, no.
In general?
Um, we did have one violation, sorry, that should have been on there for Joe Hall. It just came in two days ago for that property that we drove past. I did send a letter to him about that and the garbage cans on Lower Roy. At this time, I don't have an update, but just so you know, that is also in the works.
Okay. And the conditions?
Copper Creek, I believe is the owner, I'm sorry.
So, where do we stand on conditions? The listed conditions, and then we were going to like strike through when they were done?
Right. I will have an updated copy for you guys at the next meeting.
Okay. Because I'm not sure we need to kill trees, but somehow or another, we do need to see that, too, at the same time. I don't know, is that something we could look at online? Does the other commissioners have a feel for that? Do you want a hard copy? Can we look at it online?
I'm fine online.
Yeah. I can do that. I can email it.
As long as you send it as a separate document.
Is that, is that all right, as opposed to killing trees?
Yeah.
I just can't see.
Yeah, no worries. And then I can get it out to you guys sooner, because I have a working document, I just spaced on putting it in here, so.
That'd be great. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Is that anything else for your report?
Nope.
Okay. So, then, let's see. Is there anyone here for open forum? I guess not. Okay. So, let's see. I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearings.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. So, the, we have a CUP, and Penny or Brian, you can stay where you're at. So, let's have Brittany read it into the record for us, please.
The applicants are requesting a conditional use permit to construct a 30 by 40 accessory structure. Their property is four and a half acres. It's located on East Roy Lake Road. The proposed structure would bring their impervious surface coverage up to just under 9% total, 15% is allowed, and it would bring their total accessory structure count to 2,900 square feet.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any comments? Just for the record, I'm going to say that I know the applicants, although our paths are not crossed for several years, and it will not affect my judgment, I feel fine on voting on this.
Still going to vote no.
Pardon? Don's trying to cause trouble over here. Okay. So, are there any comments, questions from the commissioners?
So, it's the same size area, is it going to, the plans are to match the existing garage's finish, I'm sorry, and color? I'm sorry. I apologize.
I did too.
You have to put a dollar in the, in the jar now.
Thank you.
Okay. Is that it from you?
Yes. I have no questions.
Are you ready for?
Yeah.
I'll move approval of the request for a CUP, where property located 25157 East Roy Lake Road, to construct a 30 by 40-foot accessory structure on the four and a half acre parcel, and to demolish an existing garage shed at the same location, and adopt the findings of fact provided by staff with the following two conditions. Number one, the accessory structure may not contain living quarters and may not be utilized for human habitation. And condition number two, that is premised upon the applicant's contacting Crowling Power as to the location and subject of a easement for the power line which goes over the buildings to make sure that it is safe and conforms to state law.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I'm assuming with what you said, Don, it implies that they, they meet the 25-foot height requirement, too?
Yes.
That or under?
Yep. Right. Good point.
So, the building can't be higher than 25 feet, according to ordinance?
What's your intention as far as height? Thank you.
It's a single story, right? So, it'll be. Okay. Are we ready for a vote? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you for coming. Sometimes there's questions, so you know. Okay.
With respect to Don's easement, have they then to provide anything to staff for?
They'd have to get either a note or a letter or a email from Crowling Power saying that the easement or where the power lines are going over the new structure, it's okay with the power company.
We're going to be farther back from the ground.
As long as the power company says they're okay, because the line goes right through there, that's fine.
No, thank you for the clarification, so that's, you know, one thing that, they need to have that in place with Brittany before, you know.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Clarification. Okay. So, do we have the interested party here for? Yeah. Can't find it. Yes, here we go. I have it highlighted. For the road vacation for Monica Anderson?
Madam Chair, do we want to close the public hearing?
Oh, yes. Thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearings.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. The vacation for the road.
So, part of our ordinance is that for road vacations, it has to go through Public Works ourselves, and then through city council. The city council's public hearing is for November 20th, just so you guys are in the loop. The request is to vacate a portion of the property behind. The request is to vacate a portion of the property behind 22500 Camp Lincoln Road. The subject property is .22 acres. It's in compliance with all other ordinance, and my understanding is Public Works did not see any issues with it.
Okay. And your Mr. Anderson?
I'm, I'm sorry.
Could I ask you to come up to the desk, so in case we have any questions? And what was your last name?
Diedrichs.
Did you get that, Maggie, for the record?
She kept her all thing, for now.
That's all right. Could I have you repeat it for?
Keith Diedrichs.
Please spell your last name. Thank you.
Okay. So, do we have any questions, comments, with regard to this? So, I noticed that the driveway is not on your property?
That I'm not sure of. It's been there for near 100 years, though, since the 30s.
So, is the intention to leave the property exactly as is, or are they going, are you going to tear down the cabin and rebuild it, or?
We're going to rebuild and put in a garage and a septic. There's no running water there at the time.
Okay, and then would you be moving the driveway at that time?
If we have to.
Okay, it isn't, it isn't on your property, so.
Somewhere, I don't understand that, I guess. I always thought it was.
Brittany, what?
I think they have that by adverse possession, and it was in a, in an easement area down here that was disappeared to.
Well, the property itself too is something that the city legal council is currently working on to put, I'll say, put to bed with Crow Wing County. There were a few things that were left undone with the properties to the south, so Tom is currently working on that, and I believe he was trying to coordinate that a little bit with the November 20th, so the city council is at least aware of, you know, the Sperncraft Commons, you know, the old access down to the lake. And, you know, the intent, and we corrected that, 33-foot easement, at least the intent was, is that that would, you know, the, you know, the intent was that it was, you know, going to the house, but I guess, Don, part of the question will be, if the 33-foot is in fact split 16 and a half, 16 and a half, then, you know, their driveway would be on their own property.
Okay. So, this easement isn't going to remain, this easement's going to go away? This, this Sperncraft easement?
That is correct.
Oh, okay.
That with, you know, oh, the city attorney's still looking at it. Yeah, we don't, I'm just saying that's still in the air, still coming back to the city council with additional information of how, you know, everything will be finally established. And, and, as Brittany said, it may be that, you know, the city will decide to keep the 16 and a half feet of the north pro, of that Sperncraft Commons for access to the lake. That's, that's still a possibility.
And I think, except for the legal question that the attorney's taking care of, the city council has kind of looked at this and said, it's fine, we just want to make sure that the legal is fine.
And if I may, I believe at one of the meetings I was at last winter, that the 16 and a half feet was already abandoned to, to Don, the neighbor there, to the south. There was a map that showed a dotted line right down the middle, and it showed it on his.
That's why the attorney is looking at it, to make sure.
Right.
Yeah.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay.
I guess I have one question, I just wanted to make a note that I own property in this plat, so I'll be asking questions, but if it comes to a motion, I won't, I'll be abstaining from any vote, because it would potentially affect me directly. The one question I had, and this isn't generally to you, it's to staff, is the original plat that's on file for Crow Wing County from 1912, which is obviously obsolete. I mean, nothing that's showing on this official survey is showing on that plat from Crow Wing County. So I guess I have questions about, when we're talking about road vacations, if you're, if this is, if this Sperncraft Commons is going to be vacated, then the neighborhood should be alerted, and I have not received anything in that regard. So I guess that would be my question with how these, how these accesses are working, because from what I see, this would be the only one left from that original plat. And, and the idea back then in 1912, it was to drag down your dock boat or whatever, and that's not the case anymore, so it's obsolete, but.
And that was prior to the new access.
Right. So, that's, that's the only questions that I had.
I'll follow up with the commission on that.
And as it is right now, there's no way you could get a boat down there, there's so many.
No, it's, it's all wooded.
Huge, huge hump going down.
It's a wooded cover, yeah.
Okay, so do we?
We make a recommendation to council.
And do we do that via a motion?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we recommend to council to approve the vacation of the easement at.
Subject to?
Subject to?
Subject to the attorney's.
Right.
Approval of the legals.
Thank you.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
All good. Sometimes they're easy.
So, leaving it in the hands of the city council and the attorney.
Okay, so that's it, November?
Yes.
November 20th. I believe this one is.
Cool.
Yeah.
20th?
Yep, at 7:00 PM.
Anything else, any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, the only thing left on the agenda is commission questions and comments?
I have two, if I, if I may. Roy Lake Tire, is there any update on what's going on at Roy Lake Tire and the multiple businesses there?
I had spoken to.
I have spoken to Justin, the owner. At this time, I was kind of left hanging a little bit, because he said he wanted to figure out what he was going to do. I did speak to Jenny on how quickly we wanted to follow up, for lack of a better term, and she said that we should give it a couple weeks and then reach out again, so that we don't, because with it being busy seasons with building and et cetera, we wanted, we wanted to give him some time before we were knocking again, so.
So we should have some sort of report by the next meeting?
Yes, yep.
And the second one is?
Wait a second, because can I follow on?
Sure.
I have that on my list, too. So are we considering that one or two businesses for conditional use permit, because they have an excavating business and they have a retail business there, right?
We're concerned about both of them.
Right, so that, would that be two IUPs then?
Yes.
Okay.
Unless he somehow could say that they're, you know, co-client, whatever, you know, in a world.
Additional.
Yes, there we go, thank you.
So then, are we looking at an after-the-fact permit fee? And then excavating, or can we do a penalty on that, too?
That's a good question, I don't have the answer. The after-the-fact fee for sure, as far as a penalty goes, I think that that might be something that we end up taking to council for approval, just because it's $100 a day times two and a half years. You know, I'm, I'm sure we wouldn't.
No, 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 no.
Go that far, but, you know, at what, you know, what, how do we pick the number? So I think that's something I would lay in council's hands.
So, I almost kind of like, after-the-fact fee, I mean, I don't think these penalties and stuff do anything. Some ways I would just kind of like to use it as a characteristic kind of thing, say we could do this, but we're not, right?
Granted, he, he got response.
Oh, really?
We technically can charge people with a misdemeanor.
But we need to notify them, and that's the unfortunate thing, is through the past few years, I think the owner of this property was under the understanding that he could be there.
Right.
And so, that's the dilemma here, that we just need to say, in two weeks, you know what, we need to have, you need to have a meeting, or you're going to have $100 a day to get this resolved. Like, there has to be a point where we need to say, this is what's going to happen if you don't do something.
So did he ever produce the email that he supposedly had gotten from?
I have not received anything from him. I wouldn't expect anything, just because.
And I know that the owner was in here multiple times, talking, so it might have been a verbal.
That could be true.
Something.
Okay. So then, so then he also needs a CUP, I believe, or, yes, a CUP for more than 50 cubic yards of material being moved?
That was kind of another issue that was brought up, because it's pertaining to his business. So if the business were to be allowed, and he did have a CUP, at that point, we wouldn't have raised concern about that, so that was another gray area.
Are we sure we wouldn't have? Why wouldn't we have, if he's moving?
Because if he was allowed to have an excavating business, then it would be expected that he's moving large amounts of everything, you know, dirt, sand, trees, gravel, whatever.
Yeah, but if he went, if he went to another property and he did more than 50 cubic yards, he would have to have a CUP for that, right?
Right.
So why wouldn't he have to have a CUP on his own property?
Because it's pursuant to his business.
Just because he has an excavating business doesn't give him the right to move dirt.
Right.
Yeah, I don't, that logically doesn't follow for me.
Key word on dirt, this is more of a civil question, but what's he filling it with?
Right.
Well, that's regulated, too.
It's significantly different than the color of the existing natural soils.
Well, I mean, he, right now, it's being deposited, there is a select grain of marble material, it's a very clean sand.
Okay.
Right, it's hand color, I mean.
Yep.
So mark off the top of your head, how many cubic?
All that's.
Fifty?
Oh, much more than 50. He's, he's moved, I want to say 200 to 300 cubic yards of material, and that's, I don't know, after the, he's a lot of material there.
Yes, so I'll, I'll just read it, the logic doesn't follow to me that he would need a CUP for that, even if it's on his own excavating? Thank you.
I agree. I've been fighting this battle. I'm trying.
Okay. And then, are we doing anything about screening? Can we, again, okay.
Yeah.
Because I, when we bring him in, I don't know what we're bringing, you know, what are we going to ask for? Are we just going to bring him in and collect the money for an IUP and send him on his merry way? What are we accomplishing?
He does understand that even if he were to apply for an IUP, it is not a given that he would be granted it.
And then what, then he just continues to?
He'd have to either put a new business in there, or he'd have to relocate?
Really?
And that's why he's taking so much time to think about it, because it's, it's really not an easy option either way, it's kind of a rock and a hard place, so that's why we wanted to give him, you know, a few extra weeks.
So have we run this by the attorney at all?
Um, yes.
And he is?
He said basically to try and get an IUP.
Okay, it's just not a good situation, no matter what.
No, it's kind of a perfect storm.
I mean, and not unsympathetic to the business owner.
Right. But we got to do it the right way, too.
But I don't like it very bad.
Right, yeah.
Okay. Great, that's it for me.
The second item, the council at this last meeting passed a one-year moratorium on storage units, and tasked the planning commission to come up with the language, or whatever we want to do with the storage units in the city, we have one year, and I don't know how, how you want to handle it, or with Courtney, or whatever, but we should start early, so that we don't end up scrambling at the last two or three months.
Yeah.
So, are we going to put together a committee?
Yes.
Okay.
So has that been passed at city council?
Yep, yep, it's in effect, yeah.
Okay, the moratorium's in effect, very good. Progress. You got anything else?
Yeah, I've got a couple, quickies. Even though I wasn't at the last meeting, special meeting, I see in the design for the new Grandview, what they call a snowbird townhomes?
Mm-hmm.
That they're designing the garage one and a half deep for golf carts, and they're probably going to put that in their marketing brochure, they're going to put in charging stations. About six months ago, I was helping Jenny initially get started on a, just a little bit on regulations for golf carts, electric vehicles, et cetera, use in the city in this one, on public streets. I would think before, if they sell these as quickly as they did their 12 homes or 20 homes that they put in on the main property last year, we're going to probably want to have that regulation in place before they sell and occupy these, whatever they are, 50 units.
I know Jenny's working on it.
Because right now, there's parties that think that the new Golay Trail is going to be a golf cart friendly trail.
It is. It's a mixed-use trail, that was part of our funding stipulation.
Yeah, that's accurate, at this time.
Yep.
But I just, that's just a suggestion. Get ahead of it before, you know, people are spending 10, $13,000 in golf carts and charging stations, and all of a sudden, we come up with regulations that says, not on city streets, or not in somewhere they are intending to use it. That was the first one. The second one is, has a letter ever gone out, I talked to Jenny about this, she's not here, letter ever gone out to my, I guess I drank coffee there, Mike and Julie French about street sales, there was an incident this summer, and I, I talked to Jenny about, she, she made a comment a meeting, or two ago, at least a meeting ago, a month ago, that a letter was going to be issued regarding what policy is, and I, I know as recently as four days ago, Mike has not received a letter, and he's assuming he's going to get an apology from the city. So, I think my suggestion would be that we put that to bed, rather than.
I'm not.
Clarify what?
This is between Jenny and the attorney at this point.
Okay. Well, then I retract, I retract the comments, I just don't want to see another incident.
No, I was under the same understanding you were, though, I thought a letter had already gone out, but.
I talked to Mike this, in the last four days about it.
Okay.
And he was wondering where his apology is. I'm serious, I'm not embellishing. Okay, it's between Jenny and the attorney. Thank you. That's it, for me.
I have, I have one more. How are we on the sandwich board issue in the city?
He has, he's made a deal to put it on private property.
Okay, because I think I saw a couple others that were out when I went through the city the other day, so I was just wondering.
They're allowed, they're just not allowed on our property.
Yeah.